... V. Miriam is also greatly involved with the Purple Heart Auxiliary. So that kind of gives you a little idea of how we are working things here. We have moved the Purple Heart 1977 chapter to Wabashaw. From Red Wing to Wabashaw. Okay? So we're all set from that standpoint also. So thank you for your attention and hope you'll vote appropriately.
I'm going to read the proclamation. We will act on it because I alone cannot in our business section. And then I know Mr. Peters has a presentation to make. "Whereas the people of the city of Wabashaw have great admiration and the utmost gratitude for all the men and women who have selfishly served their country and this community and the armed forces, and whereas veterans have paid the high price of freedom by leaving their families and communities and placing themselves in harm's way for the good of all. Whereas the contributions and sacrifices of the men and women from the city of Wabashaw who served in the armed forces have been vital in maintaining freedoms and way of life enjoyed by our citizens, and whereas many men and women in uniform have given their lives while serving in the armed forces, and whereas many citizens of our community have earned the oldest military decoration and current use, the Purple Heart Medal, as a result of being wounded or died while engaged in combat with an enemy force, considered as a singularly meritorious act of essential service. And whereas June 5th, 2018, has officially been designated as the day in the city of Wabashaw to remember and recognize the veterans who are the recipients of the Purple Heart Medal. Now be it resolved that the Wabashaw City Council hereby claim the city of Wabashaw as a Purple Heart city honoring the service and sacrifice of our nation's men and women in uniform wounded or killed by the enemy while serving to protect the freedoms enjoyed by all Americans." And I'll ask for a motion later on the acceptance of this. At this time, Andrew, would you like to make your presentation?
Can you advance? Commander? Mayor?
Yes, please. Hi. I'd just like to do the follow. My name is Andrew Peters. I'm a 51-year American Legion member. I'm a Vietnam-era veteran. Heavily involved in veterans legislation in the past three years. I hold three positions in Legion. Vice Commander of District One, Commander of Wabashaw County Council, and Adjutant of Lake City Post 110. At the legislation this year, there was a Senate and a House bill pushed through allowing counties and cities to become a Purple Heart city or county. And what this does is it allows the city or county to accept donations towards the effort. And what I've done, and I'm personally going to donate the first sign of reserved parking, I'm going to donate this to the city of Wabashaw. Between Mayor Hall and Commander Noel, they'll decide where the place to sign, and then if the post wants to buy additional signs for their spots, that's their call. So personally, on behalf of the American Legion, Mayor and Commander, I present you with your first sign in advance of the vote, which I assume you will approve.[236.01][236.01](Laughter/Applause). Those who know me, if you want to embarrass me, reject it.[247.31][247.31](Laughter).
You know where this one's going to go is in my driveway. I have eight children.[253.01][253.01](Laughter) And I might be able to park in my own driveway. Right?
Can you show that to the audience?
Thank you very much. And what may have been missed in this, Wabashaw, the city, Wabashaw, the county, will be the first city-county in the nation to be Purple Heart city-county. We have some other firsts going on tonight. This is a night that you have worked for, for years. Tonight, we're going to hear about the bonding issue and the 8.1 million, or how much it is. Hear about that. Tonight, we're going to hear about the Memorandum of Understanding with the U.S. Army Corps of Engineers, that we have worked and done much, much work to get to this evening. So it's a night for celebration. And Colonel, again, we're so happy you're here. The Memorandum of Understanding is in your packet. It's on the website. And it's, if you want two more copies, just call Sue. Right? Not exactly. But I'll get back to where we're supposed to be. We do committee reports here, and I'm glad that you're here because you'll hear about our community. We're going to start the community, the committee report with John Friedmeyer tonight.
All right. Port Authority met last, or May 15th, Tuesday. General business, paying bills, staff bills, that kind of thing. We talked about, had a presentation with respect to the transfer building. That's the buildings on Second Street from the Wabashaw area Chamber of Commerce. They're going to come back to us with a bit more details and information about what they might like to do with that building. We talked about the Main Street program that's been, that's been kind of developing here over the last few months and how we can collaborate with them. And we identified some specific goals going forward for the Port Authority that hopefully we can collaborate with the Main Street project. And our big goals at the Port Authority are things like continuing to fund our revolving loan fund so we can help small businesses get going, the development of additional spaces to, for industrial parks. Those sorts of things are more what we're looking at. We also spent much time with what we're going to look at tonight, which is a Memorandum of Understanding. That originated out of the Port Authority, as well as the bonding. So those are the things we talked about at the Port Authority on the 15th. That's about it.
Questions for John? Brian?
I wasn't able to be at Utilities. I asked Steve if he would take my place and fill in tonight.
Mayor, we met tonight at 4:00. And at that meeting, we hired our city engineer to do what's called a well protection, wellhead protection plan for our new city well, which involves telling the several state agencies, including the Department and the DNR, where all the sources of contamination are as far as gas stations and above-ground contaminations, and where existing wells are besides our own. And also, every 10 years, and that's up now, also, we have to do the same thing for our other two city wells. And so this ends up being kind of an expensive process because we have to show how the water underground is migrating toward the river and any sources of contamination that are upstream, so to speak, how they could potentially contaminate our city well and what we plan to do to avoid that. So that was one thing. Secondly, we gave Mr. Pat Newell, our Water and Sewer Superintendent, go ahead to buy some new pumps that were dying out at the sewer plant. These are pumps that run 24/7 to keep the bugs active in our aerobic plant. And then finally, Coffey Mill Ski has got a, Coffey Mill Ski Hill's got an outstanding kind of a large water bill that they were unable to pay, and they had a poor year this year. And so we decided we would put that water bill onto the tax rolls of the property at a cost of 3 and 3/4 percent rather than try to have them come up with all the money once. And we've done this before when there's a hardship situation. We just put it on the tax rolls, and sooner or later, we'll get our money. And in this case, who knows when, if they have, they'll pay it. So we're trying to keep them alive. And I guess that was pretty much it.
Thank you, Steve. Questions? Craig?
Actually, I do have a question, Steve. So do you think that that, the wellhead protection, will you have to still do two or will it become one?
Actually, the way it sounds, we have to do two even though they will overlap.
Okay.
Our wells are close enough where one plan overlaps the other, so probably will eliminate some work, but not all of it. The state agencies don't really care. They want both.
Yep.
And so we kind of have to follow the rules, I guess.
Okay.
What's the cost estimate for those?
It's going to end up costing us over $30,000 to get this done because it's a lot of paperwork and a lot of back and forth and a lot of ferreting out all the hazards. And so I didn't realize it would cost that much, but Brian, our engineer, said it is a job.
Is that for both of them?
That is. And the one is a new one for our new city well, and the other one has got to be done every 10 years, and that's up to bat now as well. So it's kind of a dual shot, so to speak.
Craig?
Well, the Planning Commission met on May 8th, and we went through our final draft of the zoning and shoreline ordinance plan. And so that is the 98 pages that is, was in your packet. That is a complete zoning and ordinance plan. And a lot of work went into that. It's been about, oh, I'd say about eight months of work so far, just trying to pull things together, any areas that are overlapping and clarify a lot of the language. So it's in front of you now. We think it's a, it's in a lot better shape than it was.
Dean, anything to add tonight?
No, I just had a couple meetings with two groups of citizens, and that'll be ongoing. I'll probably bring something back next month.
Okay. Thank you. Jeff, anything to add?
Nope.
All right. Well, let's move on then. Tony, Dylan?
Good evening, everyone. The Wabashaw Street Commission met this afternoon, 2:00. Just one item under general business. It was a request from a couple residents on Lawrence Boulevard. They're looking at installing some concrete in front of their properties at their cost. Staff and commission, we looked at it, discussed, you know, grade slope, water runoff. We found no issues, and the request was passed. Some old business. Since the previous meeting, the last year's crack filling project has been completed. The Park Board met May 16th. Again, one item under general business, just a simple request from the NEC to borrow some picnic tables for their adjacent open space there. A motion was passed. We will provide them with six tables to be used. We finalized some wording changes on the seasonal pool pass policy. The new sandfilling over at the pool, it's up and running. We've had great numbers so far, so pleased to report that and just hope to have a safe and busy season again over at the pool, so. Any questions?
One question. So there's a hole on Second Street. When I tried to drive over here, is that a Utilities problem?
I believe they're digging water and sewer into that lot because somebody will be building on the empty lot there. So what's going on?
There's no hurry to finish that, is there, Craig?[871.13][871.13](Laughter).
Small detour.
Thank you, Dylan.
Yep.
Thank you very much. All right. We will move on to number eight, the consent agenda, which tonight includes the approval of the May 1st regular minutes, the request for a donation from the fireworks, for the fireworks, approval of annual liquor licenses and three, two beer license renewals, the first reading of the zoning ordinance amendments, St. Elizabeth Medical Center temporary on-sale liquor license application, Minnesota Main Street Program Memorandum of Understanding, and warrants. Number seven and number eight is the appointment of Chris Cruz to the Planning Commission. Motion to approve?
I'll make a motion. Second.
Steve got it.
Question? Oh, okay. Any questions or discuss? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign, passed unanimously. Public hearing tonight, none.
I have a question. Were we going to pass a reaffirmation of the Purple Heart City proclamation?
You know, we were.
I thought we were going to do that in general business. Is that in general business?
Yeah. And Sue wrote it down. I can't read it upside down. I'm looking for a motion to approve the Purple Heart proclamation.
I'll make that motion.
Second.
Friedmeyer and Sola. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Thank you, each and every one of you.
Thank you all.
We move into general business item number one, Memorandum of Understanding between the U.S. Army Corps of Engineers, the city of Wabashaw, and the Port Authority. And Colonel Cawkins, I'm going to just introduce you and let you go on with this.
Okay. Well, thank you, Mr. Mayor, and thank you, councilors, for inviting us here and for letting me sit at the table with you all. It really is an honor. I'll try to keep this brief because I know you have a lot of things going on, but I'm just going to say it's, it is, it's really neat to be a part of this in a, in a small town in the heartland of America here to see. I'm guessing they probably don't pay you guys too much to be sitting up here and doing the good work of the city of Wabashaw for the people of the city. And so we're here to support you guys. We're not here to make life harder for you. We've got a, we've got a tough job to do, but we're, we can't lose sight of the fact that we're doing it to help you all. So we keep the river open on behalf of the nation, but we do that really for the local community because we know that it's important for agricultural products, for the farmers in the area to move those out to export. And if you look at the bigger picture, we're talking about international trade all the time in the headlines. Mississippi River is critical to that international trade. But if we, if we lose sight of the small towns like Wabashaw, then we, we're not doing our job. So that's why we're here tonight. That's why we're talking about this Memorandum of Understanding because it's a clear indication that we want to work with you and come up with a solution that works for you locally and for us as we look at the length of the Mississippi River that we're responsible for maintaining. So that's what this MOU does. If anybody has taken the time to read it, I know our lawyers, teams from the city and from the Corps of Engineers have worked long and hard on this, so I don't want to discount their work, but I will say that it's a little bit hard to read. So I'll just tell you what's in it briefly. Really what it does is recounts the situation where we've been, that last year, we published a draft plan that for, for good reasons, caused a bit of an uproar in town here. We recommitted ourselves to working with the local community, and we've come up with, we, you know, I was challenged by my higher-ups from DC to think outside the box and find a way that worked. And so you'll see, if you read the Memorandum of Understanding, it talks about a Section 217 agreement. You don't have to worry about what that is, but what it is technically, but practically speaking, what it is, is a way for us to work with the city of Wabashaw, with the Wabashaw Port Authority, with the state of Minnesota, and with private entities as well to find a way that works for the city, to permanently place all the dredge material that we have to dredge out of the river just about every year here in Pool 4, which is 250,000 cubic yards. It's quite a bit. We were just over with the dredge crew. You probably see them in town when they're here, but 53 people crewed that. They worked 24/7 for six months every, every summer, and about a month and a half of that is spent in Pool 4 here. So they're constantly moving sand there. What the, what this agreement, this memorandum commits us all to is to working in good faith to find a way to develop a port here in the city of Wabashaw, to work with the city, to find locations to place the sand, to come up with, to work through some negotiations on how we pay for that, and ultimately to find a way to dispose of the sand permanently in a way that works for you and works for us. So in general terms, that's, that's what we're agreeing to tonight, and it really has taken quite a bit of work on all sides over the past several months to come up with this plan. It's going to take a little bit more time to get through all the details of it, but we expect that by later this summer or the early fall, we'll be able to publish a draft plan, and then over the, the months, six months or so after that, come up with a finalized agreement. So I think once we publish a plan in the late summer or fall, you'll see that there's a, that there's a solid plan that's, I think, again, worked for all parties involved. So I will stop there. Mr. Mayor, if there are any questions, I'd be happy to answer them.
Council members, any questions?
Yeah, I'd like, I'd like to clarify a little bit on the Memorandum of Understanding. So I went through it, and it's, you know, it's kind of lengthy and a little bit legalese, but I just want to make sure that I understand what's, what's in it and that the rest of the council understands if my understanding is of what's in it is. But it said that the MOU is between the Corps of Engineers, the city, and the Port Authority. That's collectively called the parties. That the Corps of Engineers will use good faith efforts to find placement in the TSP, sort of the preferred alternative.
Yes.
Other than the previous selected ones, which were the Fitzgerald and the Drysdale ones.
Yes.
That all parties will use good faith efforts to develop a dredge material placement facility, which may or may not be the barge terminal that we're talking about, contingent upon adequate funding. And that this facility will be owned by the Wabashaw Port Authority and be located in the Carl site that was identified on the, on your original DMMP.
Yes.
And be operated via a long-term lease with a private entity. Further, a user fee or tipping fee will be calculated to repay the parties for the cost of developing and operating this facility, and the Corps will pay to the Port Authority this fee. And then an annual target capacity will be calculated to complement the tipping fee. If the target capacity is not met, the tipping fee may be adjusted in the following year. The tipping fee may not exceed the Corps of Engineers' costs to dispose of the dredge material by themselves. So there's a, there's a ceiling there. And then a number of conditions. Lease agreement for that port facility will between, be between the city or the Wabashaw Port Authority and a private entity. The site plan will be approved by the city and the Port Authority. Permits and licenses for the port facility from all governmental sources will be obtained. Environmental review, as applicable, will be done. Construction plans and other plans for the port facility as related will be approved by the city engineer and the city code, including to utilities, roads, and otherwise. And then the term of the MOU is until a final agreement under Section 217 is made. And then all eyes, all laws, all laws will be complied with, and that this MOU is non-binding. Okay. So it's all those, those are some of the main points that I was trying to extract from, and I just wanted to make sure that I understood it.
That's, Craig, that's exactly, I think, how I see it. You did well.
Daniel?
And Mayor, if I could just summarize a few other key points. Thank you, counselor, for your summary. And thank you, Colonel, for your summary as well. I think at a high level, Colonel Cawkins identified kind of the general framework of the idea of the MOU. I think that the fundamental issue here that the city is working towards with this MOU is to try to identify alternatives to the Southside Fitzgerald site and ultimately the Drysdale sites as well. And the focus of this MOU, and like was previously mentioned, this is non-binding, and as Colonel Cawkins said, this is really an agreement to agree to work towards this Section 217D agreement. And really, the bottom line for the city is, we've had in all the discussions with the Corps, is we want to work with the Corps to develop a win-win solution that will alleviate or take away the need to use those objected to sites, the Southside Fitzgerald site and the Drysdale properties. And we've worked with the Corps, and the Corps has been creative in their legal team and staff has been creative, and there is a provision in law under this Section 217 of the Water Resources and Development Act that allows the Corps some additional flexibility to develop public-private partnerships in this context. And so really what this agreement is, is it's saying that we are going to work together to develop this public-private partnership. It's going to take, as Colonel Cawkins indicated, additional time to really work out the details as to how that's going to work. Obviously, the numbers are very important, and where and how to deal with all of the dredge material is very important. And those are all details that still need to be worked out. But every indication is suggested that the Corps, by their presence here tonight and otherwise, is going above and beyond to work with the city. And, and the expectation and the, really, the Memorandum of Understanding here is that we're going to continue to work to identify that alternative and really hammer out the details. And so this is non-binding, so the city, you know, as these attorney in this matter, we're not taking on any legal responsibilities, neither is the Corps. This is really a, an exercise to kind of hash out in some detail how we're going to work forward, move forward together, what generally the alternative is, kind of point us in the right direction, and really kind of start to focus the discussion about how to solidify these alternatives going forward. So if there's any other questions on any of the details, I'd be happy to answer any questions from them.
If there are no further questions for Mr. Marks or Colonel, I'm going to ask for a motion to approve the MOU as presented.
I'll make that motion.
I'll second. Further discussion?
I'd just like to say that we've been working with the Corps for eight or nine months on this. They've been very cooperative. Bob Edström is the project engineer and has worked with us really, really well. So this has been a good, good effort by all parties to try and come to a reasonable solution for this.
And I should interject to you and Chad.
Chad has done a lot of work on this.
Really instrumental in this, and is really, thank you for all, everyone's work in that because it's really, you guys have brought good answers, good scenarios to the Port Authority, and it's worked out really well.
Motion made in second. Further discussion? Roll call, please.
Friedmeyer?
Yes.
Mayor Hall?
Yes.
Sola?
Yes.
Moyer?
Yes.
Woodley?
Yes.
Schmidt?
Yes.
Falkum?
Yes.
That is 7-0 unanimous. We now are going to have a brief ceremony to sign the memorandum, but as I said, we will recess until 7:50. We will be back in session at 10:00. 10 to 8. Okay, recess. And we will sign the, the papers.
Mr. Falkum, thank you for summarizing it. That was, was well said. An honor.
Thank you, Colonel. I appreciate all the cooperation we've been doing.
All right. Which one, Sue?
We're signing it. And Sue's signing it as well, right?
Yes.
And John? All right. Colonel, your first.
We're just about next to the Port Authority meeting.
And tell the Port Authority meeting?
Yes.
See you again.
Do we have others?
Time for a shower.
One more. You can say that just because you're... And wasn't just because of the action taken. Okay.
Is it okay to ask questions?
Yeah.
I mean, I...
Okay, are there, in the room, are there any questions for the Colonel? We have Vicki back there.
I want to know when the Army Corps is going to abandon the Fitzgerald, River Drive, and Drysdale thing that caused such an uproar here.
Right now.
And I think we should know that for 40 or 50 years, something like that. You can't ask the river, you know, I understand, it's not predictable, but we should not be living in limbo because some computer came up with us and didn't even know, didn't even know that there are 59 households there. So when will we know if that is abandoned?
Right now, right now.
Right now.
Right now.
That is abandoned?
Yes, ma'am. I can't commit to 40 or 50 years, but that's exactly what we're here for tonight.
Well, I have not seen that MOU. Is it in there that that's abandoned?
I don't think it's specifically in there, but that's what this MOU is for. And I apologize, I talked to Mr. Drysdale before, I should have talked to you before this as well, but I hope that we're not causing you stress anymore, because you shouldn't feel that. We're not going to use the Southside Fitzgerald site. I can't promise that 40 years from now, somebody's not going to. I don't think anybody will, but I think I'll be...
Somebody else can worry about it. Okay, thank you very much.
Yes, ma'am.
It would be nice to have that in writing, but a good word is a good word. Okay?
Okay.
Next question? Next question? All questions answered?
Just like that.
One more?
Has the Corps taken this example and used it to, I guess, going forward, maybe put in different protocols when coming up with large-scale plans that affect communities? Maybe doing more, working with the community at the front end going forward?
Well, I, yeah, so for the St. Paul district of the Corps, yes, absolutely. We've changed the way we look at these projects, and if nothing else, an emphasis on communicating with the local community, as you mentioned, is the center of our efforts now. So we're working on projects, we call this Pool Four, or Lower Pool Four, but we're working on projects in Pools Two and Six and Eight, and which other ones am I forgetting?
Five and Nine.
Five and Nine, okay. So we're working on several simultaneously, and this is absolutely informing the way that we deal with other towns and communities.
Just to clarify one thing, when do you expect the final TSP to be released?
That should be early fall. So another more sort of complicated answer to your question is, it's not just us, but it's our higher headquarters that have taken a more interest in these DMMPs. And so we think we'll have a plan done sometime within the next 30 to 45 days, but we're going to send it up for review at our higher headquarters, which it may be there for a month or two. And once that, we would put it out for public comment. So if you do that math quickly, June, July, August, we're hopeful that by September, we can have something out for public comment. I'm not going to commit to that. If you don't see it in September, we'll keep in contact with you and let you know where we are. And if you're not getting that information, call me anytime and ask, and I'll let you know. But September, October, we think we'll have the next version of the plan out for public And I think that's probably the most important part for the community here. After that, we'll take the public comments into consideration and rewrite the document, and it may take a month or two after that to have a final signed document. But once it's out for public comment, that would be, I think, the version that most people will be most concerned to see.
Other questions? If not, Colonel, again, thank you for coming down, you and your team, and come to Wabashaw anytime. We've got great restaurants and places to walk.
Yeah, it's a pleasure. And I feel bad when Mr. Marks, Mr. Marks, says that we're going above and beyond, because really, we're doing...
Yeah.
So how long is it until you appear?
Yeah, and before that was...
Thank you, Colonel.
Thank you, Colonel.
The third board was...
Yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you, Colonel.
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 Good.
To make the move.
It's fine.
Yeah, I guess.
Got her name?
No.
Yeah.
I don't know.
Watch it. Well, it's like being sent out to the community as well. I felt the stress really going away last summer. I wasn't there that night.
I can understand that.
And then he said, uh, he was at a conversation with him.
Okay, we're the second reading of the park board ordinance amendment. I think that's just moving from seven to five members, right?
Congratulations.
Yeah.
That's right. Thanks, everybody.
Or done then.
They've all got jobs, uh.
I'm glad to hear that.
You're welcome, come in. All right, we're going to reconvene. It is, uh, seven fifty. And the next item on the, uh, general business agenda, council members, is the second reading of the park board ordinance amendment, which basically is saying they're gonna move from seven to five members on the, uh, park board, one being allowed not to be a citizen of the city.
I'll make that motion.
I'll second.
Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Passed unanimously. Uh, the next three items will, uh, ask Sue to kinda, uh, steer. Codification services agreement. What does that mean, Sue?
They will handle our, um, codification of our city code and they put it on the website and they also give us printed copies, but it's, it's more also that they, it's a group of experts and it's legal and it's, um, expertise in handling cities' codes and they will look at it at your state statute level and your city level and make sure that we are up to, um, state statute, you know, standards and a lot of our codes were not. And this is a, uh, project we've talked about for years and years and years and then we're just finally, um, deciding that we should get this done because a lot of time is since searching for things. We spend a lot of staff time searching and searching and we need to get past that searching and, you know, come up to, to current standards. If you see the list of all the other cities who are currently doing it, uh, we're kinda behind the, the ball there, but. And it will be searchable for everybody and that's public too. If you wanna know sidewalks, we have people come in and ask about, you know, fences. All you have to do is type in fence or sidewalk and it, it's right there.
It's a searchable document.
You know, with, you know, less than a minute, you've got your information, so. And it also keeps track of the dates of your updates. Right now, we couldn't tell you when the last time a certain ordinance was updated because, you know, it's just, it's time sensitive and, and we don't necessarily know twenty-five, thirty years ago when that update was made and thi- this will all be, you know, dated and searchable and, and then they also handle all our updates. So when we update, we just send them the email and they take care of it, website, printed form.
Yeah, I know, you brought up a point and maybe you guys have run into it too, but more like sidewalks, that there's not a chapter for sidewalks and so I'm guessing where's sidewalks now and so you end up going through the whole thing. It's really, it's really time consuming.
Yes.
And a lot of the language in there is duplicated in other sections and so it's...
It's a mess.
It is a mess. And it's just from constantly trying to modify it or...
Changing staff and so they will get us up to date and...
Are they gonna do this every year or do we do it once every five years or...
You, you can do it whenever. I talked to somebody from the city of Stacy and she said she waits, um, once a year she sends them their updates and then they, they take care of it. The code is linked to it.
That's the additional one eighty?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, it's pretty, pretty reasonable.
So this, this first one includes all the work, the setup, uh, and then online hosting, right?
Right.
So, and so going forward, we'd still, we'd be four fifty every year?
Right.
Plus the one eighty?
And that was, yeah, for whatever your change or your update would be, right? Depending on how many pages it included.
I'll make a motion to approve. It's, I'm just echoing what everybody else said. I look through ordinances on a daily basis in cities all over and counties and it's a disaster, so. Um, and we planned for it in the capital improvement plan.
We have.
So it's not a surprise cost. It's something we planned for.
I'll second. We have a motion and a second to approve, uh, investment. Further discussion or questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign? That passed unanimously. Next one, Sue. On the agenda is...
That's another thing we're trying to work on time with the codification process and other projects that are getting approved here and, you know, just like tonight and stuff. We are dealing with shortage of city hall staff, so in order to be able to work on our projects and be able to, uh, move forward, we need to remove some of the time that, you know, you look at what, what you pay staff per hour and what somebody can just do. A lot of cities are going to this. I talked to, um, the references that were listed and Red Wing uses them, I think, just for everything now. She said it's, it's so smooth for them now, they just, they're handling all their meetings. Aaron Reeves used to be the city administrator for Cannon Falls. He's the one who got this going for them. He said they loved it and they're still using it and now he's with the city of Cloket and he's, he's working on getting this going in Cloket too. He says it just frees up staff time and, and, um, so...
So what this is, is, um, you would submit electronically then?
Yep, and I talked to Cannon Falls and she said she gives them her notes and then they watch the video and they, they...
So they would transcribe it into, on the hard copy and keep it? And you're looking at how much a month?
It was a year, I think, thirty-three hundred bucks a year.
Yeah, they do it by the minute.
Yeah.
Yeah, so it just depends on how long your meetings are, how many meetings you have. Right now, we're just talking about HPC Planning Commission and Council and we can just gauge how we like it and how it's working and we can always subtract or add or whatever.
I'll make a motion to approve.
Second.
Questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign? Passed unanimously. Sue, personnel?
That is something we used to have and I don't know how many of you remember that, Steve maybe and John, uh, we used to have a personnel committee and many cities do so. Yeah, so when you've got issues or even if you're looking at, um, staffing, looking at the future, um, they've been talking about it at the last couple MCFOA conferences. I have been to, um, uh, they have a term for it, but, you know, looking at future retirements, people...
Succession planning.
Succession planning, that's what they're talking about. So councils need to start working with staff on that succession planning, looking at your current staff, you know, looking at the talents of everybody, how you can, you know, merge or bring on and everybody to the best of their ability and then look at how you can, you know, move past people who are, will be retiring and how you can replace them and at what time and... So our old personnel committee was old city council and nobody's here anymore, so we need to get that updated and get going on that again.
I'd volunteer for that, Mayor.
I'd volunteer as well. Oh, yeah.
Uh, do you three wanna figure it out?
Sure.
Okay, I'll point, uh, Brian and John.
Well, it seems to me that there was three council on there or was it...
Well, and the, the position of mayor is on there also.
Okay, all right.
Yeah.
Yeah. Uh, and make a note that Jeff, uh, would also like to, uh, be part of that in the future.
Okay.
Did I get a motion?
That's it.
Not yet?
I'll make a motion.
Further discussion or questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign? Passed unanimously. We are in the middle of the summer and we're talking about Christmas decoration funding request. And I am going to, um, invite Linda Oden to the podium. Over the years, I've said much of our local success is just generated or initiated by our local citizens and this is a situation where Linda is a local citizen and she had an idea and she went to work on it, so tell us where we're at, Linda.
Well, I have a five-year plan to improve the holiday decorations, not only just for Christmas, I want it to be winter as well, so that we can kinda cover, once the, Christmas has passed, Public Works has agreed that they would remove the Christmas decor and the winter decorations would continue to stay up and they would be up for when grumpy old men or any other things that come, just to keep the town looking festive. And I guess that's part of my goal, is to try to get more people in the community to come downtown for the Christmas holiday season and also to hopefully get more visitors as well with beautifying the area.
Tony, you're on that committee also, aren't you?
I've been in. Several of us have.
Okay, so you're asking, uh, for five grand from the city of Wabashaw toward Christmas decorations. Carolyn Cleese has committed twenty-four hundred to the, toward the decorations.
Can I ask you a question?
Mm-hmm.
So it says you've got a five-year plan and the cost for the first year will be eight thousand. Is it then gonna be eight thousand for the next four years too?
No, actually, year four and five are gonna, going to be the most expensive. That's when we would be purchasing the snowflakes to put above the banners that the snowflake or the, uh, snowman banners that we have. We have to wait for year four and five until we get new light poles, 'cause we wanna make sure that decorations that we would be purchasing would accommodate the new light poles. So year seventeen and year, or, excuse me, year fourteen, I've, I'm estimating about seventeen thousand and year five, I'm estimating about nineteen, twenty thousand.
That gets into my question. Um, will you be back next year asking for money?
Yeah.
Well, I'm hoping, I'm, I guess what I'm asking is if I could get five thousand every year.
Yeah, and because we got budget coming up here and we...
Right, and so if you could budget five thousand for the next five years and then I'm also pursuing other avenues as well. And for, so for the city, that would be twenty-five thousand and life expectancy of the decorations is twenty-five years, so that would be about a thousand-dollar investment from the city per year.
Who puts up and takes down all these decorations?
Staff.
Staff.
Public Works is willing to do it. I've been working with Tony, that's, and the banners and all those things that we've already, uh, met with vendors, he's been there along with us and has agreed that they would be comparable, other than in year four and five, till we know when, what the new light poles will look like.
Is this a Main Street thing?
Main Street in Pembroke.
No, uh, uh, Main Street program.
Oh, excuse me.
It wouldn't, it wouldn't...
But doesn't, doesn't fit into that?
Well, it could. That could be one of the things we can work on.
I'd be comfortable in, um, uh, allocate in, uh, what is it, five thousand?
Yes.
Yeah, uh, this year and, uh, uh, ask them that you contact the Main Street program, kinda work with them also and then, uh, follow up on this, uh, uh, in the budget session for next year and, uh, and we have to start somewhere, you know?
I, I don't disagree.
Yeah.
Now, if we spend this kind of money, do we need like more bids than just one?
Well, I did meet with two different vendors. And we went... The one that we are pursuing has, um, a, a very good history of their, City of Elbert Lee has used them. They purchased their Christmas decorations from them twenty-five plus years ago and now they're at the point where they're replacing those and they're still able to use some of those. And so the quality, longevity and, um, the other, they did outbid the other vendor that I did meet with as well.
Okay.
And Sue, I got a question for you or, or our lawyer. Um, if we, uh, go ahead with a five-thousand-dollar donation, who are we donating it to? Are we donating it to our organization or are we donating it to you, Linda, or...
I was hoping we would be able to maybe run it through the city or some tax, um, 'cause I don't wanna have to pay sales tax on it, so...
The city pays sales tax.
They do, okay? I was told otherwise.
For exempt from labor, but, um...
And some materials.
And some materials, like fire department, there's some safety items, but for the most part, we do pay sales tax as a city entity.
Okay, well then that's, I was misinformed there, so, 'cause that would, that's important to me as well. I, I don't wanna pay sales tax, so I have to...
So just to be clear, on the Main Street, so we're just kicking off...
I know. I know. That's right.
We're not moneybags and we're not gonna be for a while yet, so, um, I wouldn't rely on us for a lot of funding.
Linda, when we had our very first conversation on this, you brought it up in your store. The city was not the first, uh, group that was gonna donate to this.
Right.
You had others who said they would help.
Mm-hmm.
How are the others doing?
Well, I think I shared part of that with you. I was told that the Main Street Committee would have funds and then I found out that one of the members on the committee had shared that with me and, uh, later I found that was not true. And then I'm also meeting, I believe it's yet this week, with the Kellogg Foundation, 'cause I had spoke with Danielle Ott and she thought that they would probably be willing to help as well, so I have an application in with them, to meet with them. So that was the two that I was first told would be able to help us.
Could we bring this committee under the hospice of the city somehow? Like parks or something? I mean, is it a parks, parks thing? I mean, or streets? I don't know.
I wonder about HPC. This is what we're talking about, yeah, right downtown.
HPC is the historic downtown, maybe.
Yeah, historic. I, uh, Steve, I gotta tell ya, I, I'm a little hesitant, you know? We give fifteen to the chamber. We've given four to the, uh, Main Street. And I'm, I'd be happy to be overruled on this, but now another five, so I think that we oughta look at it as a, a total city investment.
Yeah, and Mr. Mayor, I, uh, this, this last winter, I was contacted by, I don't know how many people complained about how the downtown looked.
How what?
How the downtown looked, probably any decorations.
Okay.
Gone, so I think this is on the city to, to help out with. It, it did, it has started looking pretty bad.
Well, certainly after September Fest. I mean, you go from way up here and...
Yeah, but you're, we're talking just lights around poles and stuff.
I mean, when I drive through Elma, I think they have, they have pretty nice decorations and we don't have hardly anything like that.
Yeah. I think it'd be good to do something. Um, it's kind of our deal in Wabashaw is bringing people into town. Um, do we need to table until we know where we're giving the money to though? That seems a little, everybody seems confused on actually where the money's going. Do we need to...
We can talk to our...
I didn't bring my motion with, but I don't know, did it say specifically what we're, what we're, who we're giving the money to? Maybe we need to clarify all that before we...
I think also on the, uh, the procurement practices, are we in compliance?
Sounds like we're okay there. I was kinda wondering about that, but Sue says okay.
We'll, we'll talk to attorney, attorney. Do we table until July?
Yeah.
Is there a deadline?
I, I had, no.
Well, yeah.
They kinda have March is, where if you order before March is when you get the best pricing on these decorations. Then the next month, uh, or next time is August first, so I have to order by August first to get the pricing that we have ordered to.
That would give you enough time to order and, and have the stuff made to have it ready for this year?
Yes.
Okay.
In fact, because we are ordering banners from the same place for September Fest and they're able to have them here for us September first.
Now, who's paying for those banners? What committee is it?
Carolyn.
Okay.
Carolyn's paying for those banners and she's paying for these banners for us as well.
Do you need a motion to table?
I, yes, and, uh, yes, you do.
Okay.
I move to table and then, uh...
I, I, I just wanna encourage that we somehow bring this under, under the umbrella of Park Board or HPC or some city committee, uh, that these guys can still work, but they can fund the money through it or whatever, whatever the proper...
Yeah.
...furbage is, so...
And I think we should make a list of those items, so we wanna know who's with, with Linda or who Linda's gonna work with.
Who her committee is and who that committee is under, whether it's under HPC or the Park Board.
Yeah. And I heard, um, I heard Dean say for the first year. Uh, I don't know if you want that, uh, as a condition or not.
We don't even have to set conditions if we table it, do we?
No, it's, the table is the topic and...
Yeah.
...to those questions and, and we'll go from there.
Okay.
Yeah, so I'd move to table then, till the next meeting, next regular city council meeting.
Tony, I saw your hand up.
I just wanted to clarify, it's my understanding that, you know, this is an example of a citizen taking on themselves an effort to improve the city, but it's my understanding that the city would own it, the city would put it up, the city would store it. The citizenry helps get it done, so it's an encouragement to the city, but it is a city's project, so I'm, I'm happy to hear that there's receptivity around the council table. Makes me feel really good that you didn't just kabosh it. So, um, you know, I hope that it will be funded in the future, but to me, it is owned by the city and it's put up by the city, stored by the city. That's why she included Tony, um, not me, Tony, you, you're Tony.
Tony Johnson.
Many ways.
A second on tabling?
I'll second.
Discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign? Passed unanimously. Still have some work to do, Linda.
I would say Tony would be a good one to talk to too. He could bring the, the work.
I think Tony has been in, uh...
He's the committee of the Public Works, so...
Yeah.
As long as it's, as long as I know where the money's going.
I think it's a good idea.
Thank you so much for your time.
Thanks.
Thank you, Linda. Okay, back to the agenda item and we have National Eagle Center vacant lot license agreement. And it simply states that, uh, the city of Wabashaw is granting a license to the National Eagle Center to use that open space until, is it October thirty-first? Is that the, the end date? I'll look it up.
Yes.
Yes, it is.
Okay, I'm gonna ask Rolf Thompson to, uh, address council, answer any questions that we may have, and he has another item that he'd like to share with us.
Well, first of all, Mayor, uh, council members, staff and guests, uh, you know, does anyone else feel like the dog that caught the car? Uh, you know, eight million dollars, um, of state investment coming to our community thanks to the legislature and the governor's signature last week, as all of you know. Can we just take a moment and kind of, I'd like to take a moment and say thanks and, and kind of pat yourselves on the back, folks? This is, uh, this is an eight-million-dollar investment coming our way. And, um, you know, first of all, Chad's not here, but, uh, you know, a year ago, uh, Chad made sure that Wabashaw's request was submitted appropriately to the state management and budget, uh, website. It was a little complicated, but, uh, uh, he got that done. Roland and John took time out to, uh, appear with, uh, individual legislators to, uh, appear at, uh, committee hearings at the Capitol over the last two years. Jeff and Craig were at our Day at the Capitol, uh, back in March, where, uh, plus over two hundred, uh, people from Wabashaw, um, were, and around the state, actually, were in the Capitol Rotunda, um, essentially rallying in support of, uh, of the National Eagle Center in Wabashaw. And many businesses in town contributed to, uh, underwrite the costs of that day. Um, and, you know, special shout-out to Gene Fries and Jane Glander, who, we said, "You guys, the only thing we needed to do is fill those buses." You know, "We need those buses full" and they hit a home run, uh, by filling the buses, so, um, you know, that's the thanks and pats on the back, I think, around this room that really go around the community. It really is, as I think about it, an affirmation and recognition by the legislator, uh, legislature, by the governor, uh, of this statewide significance of what we have going on here. Um, that, that is how I would take it, as recognition and affirmation of our vision for the riverfront, our community's vision and, and the, its importance to the state of Minnesota. But what does it mean for Wabashaw? How can we maximize this incredible opportunity? That's, that's the question for all of us, beginning tonight, is how do we make sure we do this right as a, as a community, not just as a National Eagle Center, uh, but as a community? Uh, having bonding approved means that the city and the NEC together can take real steps towards realizing something like this. Uh, you know, this is a concept, uh, done by, uh, LHB a year ago or so, but, uh, it's a concept, but it means we can take real steps now toward, toward this kind of vision. It means that, uh, the real work begins. Uh, it means that we need to work together to figure out what we want the space to be, what we want our downtown to be. Chad and I have already met to begin this process, uh, but we really need you. We need you all, the council and, uh, commissions, uh, in the city to be thinking about the space, uh, to be contributing your ideas, uh, for how we can achieve the goals that the city set out for the river. Uh, you know, how to bring people off the river from these riverboats, uh, and from recreational, into our downtown. The goal of giving access to the river, uh, for our, the residents of our community and to the goal of meeting the, the NEC's needs for, uh, uh, increasing attendance and programming. Maybe most importantly, we need to make sure that we're using this space as a catalyst for downtown revitalization. I'm excited about Main I'm excited about Main Street, um, I'm, uh, and the initiative there. I'm excited about holiday decorations, uh, all, all kinds of things for our downtown. But when, when the NEC purchased the four buildings, uh, on Main Street, you know, one of our clear goals from the outset was that we believe this would, would provide a catalyst, provide an impetus for further economic activity down. So, state bonding gives us a chance to move forward together on this vision. We need your ideas, your thinking on this. We need each commission to be thinking about what's, what's our, this commission's role in helping us realize this vision of, of a revitalized downtown. You know, Wabashaw is America's eagle destination. Not just a destination for tourism. We're, we're a destination, and I, I believe we can be more of a destination, for families to settle, to raise, raise families. One of the reasons Lisa Clark, the head of DMC in Rochester, wrote us a letter of support was because, and in her letter, she said, "We need communities like Wabashaw to help us attract the talent that we need for the future of this region." Not just Rochester, of the region. We need communities like Wabashaw thriving. That's, that's the kind of recognition that we've gotten and, and support around the, um, around the region. We are an amazing destination, uh, to work, to reside and to visit. I'm eager to work with all of you to really make this happen. As you heard here last month, Emily Durand, uh, from Emily Durand, the Eagle Center has a task force of the board and community members working right now on open space plans, on the, the plans for the vacant lot that, that is next to the Eagle Center. You'll see a temporary stage, uh, already in place, uh, in, in that space.
Looks nice.
It's, it's temporary, it's not finished. It'll be dressed up, uh, a little more. But we plan to have a couple of programs a week, National Eagle Center programs a week on, on the stage. And, um, uh, this afternoon, there were some high school kids, uh, must've been in theater or, or choir, but they were rehearsing some, I don't know what they were doing, but they were on the stage.
I was watching it.
That, you know, you build it, they will come. They were on the stage having fun. And, uh, but also, uh, we're involving the Chamber, Riverboat Days will do some stuff on, with the stage, with the space. Septoberfest, of course, we're coordinating with and, uh, we think it'll be really cool. So, um, yeah, the stage isn't done. Glad you think it looks good now, but it, it'll be, it'll be dressed up. So, our goal is really to begin this summer, see what, what works. We're, we'll be evaluating everything that goes on there. You know, you'll see some benches already. You heard earlier, uh, from the Park Board that, uh, um, they approved six tables, I think I heard, picnic tables, so that we can activate that space. Well, I'll leave it there. Um, I think that kinda leads into this agenda item. Because we have, uh, we don't really have a use agreement yet. We're still under our development agreement. Chad felt that we needed a, uh...
A license.
A license for the summer, just to, uh, enable us to move ahead with...
It expires in, uh, the end of October, I think.
Right. So, a long introduction, but, uh, again, pat yourselves on the back because, uh, this, this is kinda great.
Questions to Rolf, as long as he's there?
Rolf, I think you need to pat yourself on the back as well. That was, uh, a lot of hard work on your part, a lot of champion and, uh, um, job well done.
Thank you.
Absolutely. It was interesting, a lot of us were up to, at the, at the Capitol at one point or another and certainly at the Day at the Capitol, but, um, it's something else. We made it through what? How many are asking? How much money was being asked? Three billion or something?
Uh, four billion.
Four billion asked?
In requests. The governor's, the governor's bill was 1.5 billion. And in general obligation bonds, the, uh, the legislature approved 825 million. So, the funnel kept getting smaller and, uh, and we're there.
That's pretty huge. Boy, it is huge.
Would someone, uh, make a motion that we approve the lease, uh, the license?
I just got a couple of questions first. I mean, uh, number, section three here, purpose and prohibited activities. I mean, you mentioned in our first part that Arjack and other groups wanted to use that vacant lot and you're totally eliminating anybody else from using that property right now with this, uh, agreement here. It's like, I mean, what, what would it be like if Slippery owner Slippery said he wanted to use Ike's Park all summer to have square dancing lessons and you can only do square dancing lessons all summer? Would that, would the city council approve that? I mean, there's the same, same principle here. I mean, you're just, we're just tying it up for Eagle Center programming twice a week. Isn't that what it says? Purpose and prohibited activities. No one else can use it essentially.
Which page are you on?
First page, section three.
Well, uh, what, uh, what I take that to mean, and Chad and I take that to mean, is, um, the groups that wanna use it would, would, uh, schedule through us. So, we've, we've talked to the, the libraries doing a, a pet parade, for example, but they're scheduling it through us. The, uh, if, if our, we've talked to Arjack, we would love them to do stuff there. But, you know, music under the bridge is kind of a branded thing under the bridge and we're not, we're not wanting to compete or move that from under the bridge. As I said, the Chamber, uh, has like the, the, uh, the rubber duck race. It will be a viewing area for the rubber duck race. So, you know, the way, what we take this to mean is that, uh, you know, our, the staff that does the scheduling of programs and use of space, you know, would take care of scheduling those things, but in effect, they would be, uh, programs that would be authorized through this license.
So, and you basically get another free license. You don't pay anything. Like a citizen, if they wanna rent a pavilion in a park, don't they have to pay for it?
Yeah.
But Eagle Center gets the whole thing for nothing.
This isn't, well, it's not a park, is my underst...
It's not a park.
It's more or less a park. That's what it's...
But in terms, in terms of the city, I don't believe it's a...
It says the licensee agrees to obtain permits and pay the permit fees as may be required by the city. Section four, page one. So, if there are fees?
Yeah, if there were fees, if there... This, this also is a precursor to, will ultimately be the use agreement. And that use agreement has a, a $500,000 price tag on it.
Right.
So, what this is, is it allows the Eagle Center and the community, for that matter, Arjack and everybody else, Chamber...
If they go through the National Eagle Center.
Which is what they will have to do ultimately anyway. So, what they're trying to do, what the Eagle Center's trying to do, is experiment with this a little bit. Learn about what will work best, you know? As opposed to going in and think, "We're just gonna go this way with it" and realize that, boy, we really maybe want that, want a permanent stage with position somewhere else. Or maybe it's a concrete slab for a permanent stage rather than a stage. All those different things, but before doing that, this gives time to understand what's our best route, what's the best route to use that. And so, um, don't get me wrong, I mean, the, the, um, Riverboat Days are talking about the Lighter Boat Parade. They wanna use that as a viewing area and it's, all those things are included in it. But the Eagle Center is, through the development agreement and ultimate use agreement, will have ultimate control over that. They will be the ones scheduling whatever events could go through there. And that was part of the deal.
So, there's still, uh, the licensee...
Yep.
Still subject to noise, uh, ordinances. And there'll be no intoxicating liquor or three-two liquor, uh, on that site. So, um, I, some of the concerns are, we have a 27-unit condo right next door. Will pay some pretty high taxes, so they might be, if they're being disturbed, it might not be a good thing. But as long, it is a public park and as long as we're observing normal noise ordinances and there is crowd and traffic control, then I think, I think it's all right. It's gonna be all right. This is a good trial, at least, to see how it's gonna go.
Aside from the Septoberfest activities, has anybody used that for anything? I don't, I don't ever remember any groups wanting to use it or concerts or anything going on there, period. So, I don't know. It's been there for a long time.
There's been a few small things, um, uh, the school used to practice down there. Dance or cheerleading or something like that throughout the summer, but, but that there again, went to prevent individuals at the school to do that, you know, except for days that, that stuff's scheduled. I think it's a good trial too.
I, I just don't like the way number three is worded because it totally just prohibits anything else but the National Eagles, Eagle Center educational seminars, presentation programs and activities conducted by the National Eagle Center and their employees and agents. Mr. Lawyer, doesn't, isn't that pretty clear? That it prohibits anything else?
I didn't draft this, obviously. My understanding from, Mike raised this with me quickly before I came down and the only information that he really gave me is that the, the purpose and prohibited activities in the licensing and use agreement, uh, the use of licensed premises provisions and some of the other provisions are fairly standard provisions. And that, that is what Mike, I mean, so the, you're looking at purposes and prohibited activities. The licensed premises shall only be used for the purpose of educational seminars, presentations, programs and activities conducted by the National Eagle Center and their employees and agents. Expressly prohibits the use of the licensed premises for any commercial purpose or other than the educational programming described therein. So, I think that, you know, depending upon how you would interpret their agents, you know, I think that you're right, there is, you know, purpose and prohibited activities that it's fairly limited or potentially fairly limited to the National Eagle Center and their programs and activities. But that's certainly something that, you know, there's a major concern there. I wasn't involved in this, so I would have to defer it to Mike.
What's your response, Rolf?
Well, as I said, Chad and I took it to mean that, that we'd be able to, uh, schedule programs with, uh, the kinds of organizations that I listed, like the, uh, local organizations where, um, doing something on the riverfront could be an enhancement for them. So, like Arjack, like the Chamber, like the library. If, uh, I, I mean, I'd be happy to entertain broader language, uh, Dan, if, um, if, if that would, if that would serve the purpose. The, the army, our interest is that, you know, we need to, we need to have, uh, groups scheduling through us. We're the ones taking the, taking on the, um, responsibility for the, for the site. We have, uh, uh, control of it in our development agreement and we'd just like to be able to cling on, being able to do some of the things that, uh, that we envision, both for the National Eagle Center and for community groups. So, I'm open to whatever language will help us accomplish that.
I don't think anything needs to be changed. I, I think, uh, if the Chamber wants to come and talk to you guys to utilize that area, that they know they can come and talk to you. It's a small city, you're not gonna be stepping on them. You need them just as much as they need you, so I don't think it's been a problem. And it's only till October, so...
And number six, I mean, expressly allows the transfer of the license and the sub-licensing allows you, allows the National Eagle Center to, you know, transfer their use of the premises pursuant to this agreement, you know, as long as it's generally consistent with paragraph three. So, I think, you know...
Goes back to the same thing, if it has to be all NEC.
This protects us too, as far as liabilities. It's good to have something in place and...
You open it up to the public, we'd get the American Nazi Party down. I think it's good this way, we have somebody supervising.
Well, and that's what it's gonna ultimately be anyway. And you know, I mean, Jeff, you make a good point. Is it broad enough? You know, I mean, it wouldn't take much to, to change that language a little bit to make it broader. It's not gonna change the NEC's goal and how they want to schedule events. That's what we want. We want open planned space, schedule events down there from all shapes and sizes. So, I mean, we, we could broaden that a little bit, right?
Yeah, and I, I, and I would defer to Mike, but, yes, I mean...
Right, yeah.
I'm, I'm comfortable moving forward.
I am too.
So, you got a motion?
Dean's got a motion. I'll second.
I didn't hear it, you know?
I, I made a motion.
Okay, so further discussion, further discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign?
Aye.
Gotcha. That, uh, passed by majority.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you, Rolf. All right, going back to just about the end. Resolution for accepting donations. Did we have a, an eighth business?
No.
No, okay, we put that in, uh, the consent agenda. Okay, donations as of June 5th. Dean, can you handle that for us tonight?
I don't have it in front of me. Oh, let's see here. Uh, let's see, we got, uh, donation for the library children. Library for, library's children, 250, Classical Township. Library again, in memory of David Butch Wolf, $50 to Mabit. Library in memory of, uh, Leon, Leonak Rye, $50. Tom Ellison, Eleanor Robey. Library again, in, uh, memory of Joseph Walrick, $30. Family, uh, library in memory of Ken Lehman, $20. Dave Kenebeck, library in memory of Hardy Schertz, $15. Library in memory of Joseph Walrick, $10. Paul and Martha Meyer, library in memory of, uh, Ken Lehman again. Brad and Ashley Shield, library in $2,097. Ruth Dauphin Foundation, library reading program, $100. California Overland, library reading program, $100 for State Bank. Library board pie sale fundraiser, $620. In honor of the library anniversary celebration, $150 from Jean Johnston, Johnston. Library, Wabashaw Winter, uh, Winter for H Club, $24 for flowers. Library, $100, Jane Wagner for flowers. Splash pad, $10,000, Ruth Dauphin Foundation, splash pad, $100. Patricia Zabel Prody, Prody. Splash pad, $100, Catherine Ger...
Garrity.
Garrity, thank you. Splash pad, $500, Kathleen Perry. Splash pad, $250, Jacqueline Dornic, Dor, Dornic? Heritage clock repair, didn't know that had to be done. $5,750, Ruth Dauphin Foundation. Wabashaw Ammon Service, $2,500 for the American Farmers' Grill Community for the Monsanto Fund. On behalf of the Redwood County Farmers, Daniel Solfer, I don't know who that is. Fireworks, $800, Burkhart Raymer. Fireworks, $300, Shields Super Value. Fireworks, $750, Wabashaw Fires Relief Association. Fireworks, $100, Kellogg's Lines Club. Fireworks, $500, Kellogg's Fire Department Relief Association. Fireworks, $250, Quick Trip. Fireworks, $300, Wabashaw Warehouse stickers. Fireworks, $500, Road, Roadie Club, Wabashaw. Riverboat Days, $500, Burkhart Raymer, host, 40086. And that is it, for a total of...
Okay, a motion to accept the donations?
移到
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign, passed unanimously. We covered a lot of, baled a lot of hay. If you were a farm kid, you would say we baled a lot tonight. We covered a lot of things. And most of it was pretty happy news. Property and liability, that's just information there. The city financials were mailed to the council. At this time, I would ask for a motion to adjourn.
I'll make the motion.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
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 We are adjourned. We are adjourned.